And now it's six o'clock. We are in the city council session. And I want to read a statement here at the beginning. The upward trending local COVID-19 numbers coming from Peterson Regional Medical Center played a major factor in influencing the decision to return to social distancing measures at city council meetings. This decision was made late last week after the hospital reported a high number of COVID-related hospitalizations. And the growing numbers of new COVID cases over the weekend only reaffirm that this move is in the best health interests of the public, the city council, and the staff. Since last Friday, Peterson has reported 55 new coronavirus cases with 26 people hospitalized on Monday. Among those hospitalizations, eight were in the intensive care unit and six of those were on ventilators. Because of this trend, we are committed to doing all we can to keeping our citizens safe while at the city hall and helping the hospital flatten the curve on this recent COVID surge. Standard safety protocols will be observed by city council, city staff, and citizens visitors attending city council meetings. And while wearing a mask at council meetings is voluntary, we highly encourage it as a preventative health measure. We will observe six-foot distance seating with visitor seating being designated and visitor overflow being the city hall lobby or outside city hall. Citizens are encouraged to view and hear city council meetings on Spectrum Channel Two or by live streaming via the city's website, www.curvilleTX.gov. City council meetings are also recorded with the recordings posted on the city's website and Facebook pages. At this time, I'm going to ask Councilmember Eichner if she would lead us in prayer and the pledge of the flag, the stand.
If you'll join me in prayer, please. Lord, we come to you tonight with thanksgiving, thanking you for the city that we live in, the community that we live in, the quality of life that we enjoy. I also ask for special protection for all of those who have chosen to serve and protect us on a daily basis. Guide and protect them and be with their families who stand behind them and support them. And Lord, as the virus again raises its ugly head and is again affecting our lives, be with those caregivers and those who are so willing to give their all to take care of others and help all of us to do whatever we can to minimize this crisis. And last, Lord, we always ask for your discernment, your wisdom, and your guidance as we make decisions that are the best decisions for our city. We ask all of these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here are some other announcements just regarding protocols. And I know if you've been here before, you've heard this, but I think it's important to go over. If anyone present wants to speak on an agenda item, they need to sign up and present a speaker request form to the city secretary over here on my right in advance of the item being read into the record by the city secretary. When speakers are called, they're to come to the microphone in front of either seating area and begin by stating their name and address for the record. Note that public comment periods are for council to set aside time to specifically hear from you. Any questions that you might have will not be responded to until after public comments have concluded. Thank you for everyone for observing this. Now, we come to the announcements of community interest. Mr. Cunyess.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and welcome to everybody tonight and everybody watching. Appreciate everybody bearing with us on what is a difficult night as far as our new setup that we, and we need to do what we need to do, and hopefully this will help some. All right, we've got some library activities coming up. The most important one I'll talk about is bats and habitats, habits and habitats. I love that picture of the bats. The bats, habits, and habitats presentation begins, runs August 14th through September 24th at the Curve Regional History Center this Saturday at 10:30 a.m. at the History Center. I think it's Knight of Brown, who's superintendent at the Old Tunnel State Park, will be talking about bats. So I think that'll be a lot of fun. Bats play a major part in keeping our ecosystem running, and everybody knows they inspire the greatest comic book hero of all time. All right, several activities with the parks this Saturday. Two big events, the kids' triathlon, that's at Singing Wind Park. I think it starts at, well, 8:45 is the pre-race meeting. Events begin at nine, and there'll be swimming, biking, and then running. They finish up with a run. That event's a lot of fun. I encourage everybody to come out and see it. That's followed at five, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. with Wet 'n' Wag. Don't know how many of y'all have been to this event. It's one of my favorite events every year. Some of those dogs don't want anything to do with the water, and some of them think they're auditioning for synchronized swimming in a water on Esther Williams Stadium. But it's a lot of fun. I encourage everybody to come out and see it. Two events next weekend, on Saturday, there's the four-by-four volleyball tournament. We're taking a sign up for that right now. I think registration deadline is the 20th. And then later on Sunday, August 22nd, so it's two days in a row, we'll have at Carver Park, the three-on-three basketball tournament, same thing. And you can sign up for that online through the, with the Parks Department. You can go on out to our website and see that. So a lot of activities coming up. On a more somber note, while I didn't get that last one on there, but we have vaccination clinics going on at Tivy High School this Saturday, August 14th from 9:00 a.m. to 3: p.m., and then August 18th at Shriners University from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. So keep that in mind. And that's it.
Good, thank you, thank you. And now, we have a presentation to make. I'd like to invite some folks in for that. Go ahead, go ahead. Let me read this proclamation. "City of Curville recognizes Heart of the Hills Golf Tournament Board with the August 10, 2021, Curville Kindness Award." I'm gonna read this, but this is all about the Heart of the Hills tournament that's just happened? What is it, 15th year? Yeah. We were out there the evening, just as the tournament started, what, folks were excited, they were bragging on the course, and you could tell. One guy that I talked to has been there 65 straight years. That's great. He came in his first time when he was eight years old with his father. Every year. The 75th Heart of the Hills Golf Tournament ran July 27th through 30th at Scott Shriners Golf Course in Curville with 210 golfers competing in championship and handicap place for top honors. There you go. The annual event provides four days of great fun and competition among golfers and also generates a substantial positive financial impact to the Curville economy. The Curville Kindness Program offers a sincere thank you to the Heart of the Hills Golf Tournament Board for its commitment to serving the Curville community, and it's signed by me and all of the city council." Now, tell us who you are.
I'm Steve Lynch. I'm the president of the committee.
Debbie Minter, I serve as treasurer and secretary.
And I'm Bonnie Morris. I run the golf pro shop in the city of Curville.
All right, good, good. I want to ask Ashley if you'll come join us. Ashley Boyle is a director of Parks Recreation, and I want to tell you, she loves that tournament. So, all right, you got her up there, there you go. Okay, all right.
One, two, three. And one more.
One more.
You can do this several times.
Okay.
One more. Thank you.
All right, good. Thank you very much. I just, I enjoyed being out there, seeing what was happening, and just a great time.
Glad you could attend.
Yeah, now there's the one that's all signed up.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate you.
All right, sir.
Steve Lynch. I'm Wayne Zidich.
Debbie Minter, my name.
Okay, we move now to the Visitor Citizens Forum. This item is provided to allow citizens who have signed up ahead of time to address the council on any item not related to another specific item on the agenda. Ms. McIlhannon asks you to please sign up with her before you speak, and no discussion may take place and no action may be taken. Since items are not posted, the council will discuss items raised, but may later refer questions to the staff for follow-up. And you have four minutes. Do we have speakers today for the citizens forum?
Yes, sir, we do. We have two. Rodney Bacon.
Okay, there he is. Rodney, if you go to that mic right there, right here.
There he is.
Yeah, there.
Hi there, I'm Rodney Bacon, 1221 Oriole Drive here in Curville. I've written the city council members recently, excuse me, Mayor Blackburn, city council and staff. I've recently written the city council members regarding the new safety facility and the proposal to fund it with certificates of obligation. Originally, I endorsed the COO, but I've had a change of heart. I recognize that we need a new facility. I highly respect our police, fire, and EMS, and I want our first responders to have the best so they can continue to provide the best. I fully support a new facility. That their facility is in dire need of replacement, though, is not an emergency which arose during the past few weeks or months. This was an old building when it was purchased. Apparently, it's been in terrible shape for years now. I'm disappointed that our city council and staff have not addressed this for the past several years. I realize that city council changes each year sometimes, but our city management doesn't. We've always had a city manager, assistant, professional city staff. So why, when we've had an urgent need, have we spent millions on a sports arena and a river trail? Seems like these are luxury items and not necessities. And the citizens of Curville didn't reject a safety facility over these expensive projects. We were not given that opportunity. So my suggestion is that we begin to do the right thing and put this and other major projects before the voters, all major projects. We've developed a bad habit using COOs. That we have developed a bad habit using COOs is just a bad answer. We've trusted you folks on council to do the right things, and y'all need to trust us that we're going to support this issue and put it before the voters. I would ask each of you, if you manage your family business, family and business finances like the city has with COOs. I'm gonna go ahead and write that check, whether there's money in the bank or not. Of course not. You wouldn't recommend it to anyone. It occurs to me that we have an election each and every year, so why has this not made it to the ballot? I mean, we had a, we had a, we had an election just a few months ago. We had another one within the past year back in November. Why is this not there? So my challenge is, is that your job is to sell the voters that this is worth their vote. I'm very much in support of a new facility. I think it's necessary, and these guys ought to have it, these guys and ladies. I hope that our past city council members realize that they've dropped the ball on our police, fire, and EMS, and I lay this at their feet. Now it's time for us to act as adults and do the right thing. We need to develop a plan and present it to the voters. Thank you for your time and service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Stricki.
Man, Curville is a great place to live. You know, it's interesting to me, two city council meetings in a row were passing misinformation about emergencies and the use of certificates of obligation. Mr. Bacon makes an interesting point, but, you know, disappointed. He should have been in a workshop here at four o'clock this afternoon so he could have heard all the details and really understood the issues because they're being misrepresented by a number of folks in the community, and that's really disappointing to me. These kinds of things are very important. The city has a number of tools in their bag, and the appropriate tool is what needs to be used. One of the things we need to think about is with a voter bond, if you're trying to purchase real estate, and I'm in the real estate business, and I'm not currently in the employ of the city, but I'm in the real estate business, and if I write a contract that's based on voters deciding whether or not they're gonna do it, that contract isn't very likely to be accepted. The tool that is necessary for the acquisition of land is something like a certificate of occupancy or obligation, which is not designed just for emergencies. It is a tool that's available for emergencies. And it was very, really made clear in the workshop today. So I'm really disappointed that there's a group going out, spreading misinformation. They're disinforming the public for some agenda that is yet to be unfolded. I'm very curious to see it come out, and I'm anxious to see what it's really all about. Now I have good news, which is really why I signed up tonight, because I didn't have a plan on talking about that. I wanted to point out that there's a new media outlet in Curville today, and it's the Kerr County Lead. Louis Amistoy has come back. He's refunded his new independent adventure. It's a wonderful opportunity to hear both sides of the arguments. It's live, it's in writing, and it's Louis Amistoy, and we have other great media outlets in the Community Journal and the KDT, but now we have a third one, and I'm really excited about the Kerr County Lead. And I hope, and I support all these media outlets, but I'm excited to have a third voice, and that's a good thing. And so I just wanted to point that out. Curville is a great place that it's encouraging businesses to come here and establish and make Curville their home because this is a great place to live, and there are five people right now in charge of that, and you're doing a great job. Don't stop. Build on the foundation of the councils before you and continue because I moved here in 2006 from Utah, and I can tell you, this is the longest I've ever lived in one place. I love it, and you guys make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stricki, can you give your address, please?
I apologize. I'm usually good at that, Shelley. 615 Earl Garrett Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers?
No, sir.
All right. At this point, let's move to the consent agenda. All of these items will be considered together unless a council member or others pull one of the items. What is your pleasure in regard to these three?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
All right, we got a motion second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. Thank you. Okay. Now, 5A, would you read that in for us, please?
Resolution number 36-2021, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of approximately 0.16 acres comprising Lot 12, Block 28, JA Tivy Addition, a subdivision within the city of Curville and more commonly known as 1221 Park. Said property is located within a single-family residential zoning district R1 and making said permit subject to certain conditions and restrictions contained herein. There are no, citizen speaker signed up, however, this is a public hearing, sir.
Yeah, okay. All right, tell us about it.
This is a request for a conditional use permit for a short-term rental at 1221 Park Street. Property is owned R1, to the north, south, and east is owned R1, to west is owned MU, mixed use. It is consistent with the Curville 2050 Plan since the base zoning is not changing. It is located on a residential street, so no traffic impact is anticipated. A short-term rental is required, one parking space for each bedroom and additional parking space for off-site manager. As being a three-bedroom home, be required a total of four parking spaces, which they can adequately provide on the property. There's the existing parking, and the garage, carport and garage and the driveway. This is the list of standard conditions for a conditional short-term rental unit, the guest notation requirement, occupancy taxes, signage should they choose to put signs on the property, minimum off-street parking, maximum occupancy of 10 guests, which they can be more restrictive, but a maximum of 10, and of course, any other zoning regulations would still be required.
Okay. Questions, council?
Have letters of opposition?
There were some letters of opposition with this one.
They're included in our packet, I think, too. But that's pretty much it, right?
That's correct.
Done after that?
And with that parking, it's all, when I drove past, I thought there was more grass. There's actually, we've, there is this much gravel.
Yes, there's the garage in the back, the driveway to the garage, the carport, and that space in front.
Okay, is the garage usable?
As far as I know.
Well, they've done a very, very nice job on this, on this property. I, I, I still, I just get, I get nervous about when we have a number of residents that are objecting, and I believe we did have, I'm correct, right, on this one?
Yes.
Yes, we did have the five, yes. And again, I just, I wish there were, and I don't know that this owner has not talked to those neighbors, but it, I get the feeling that they've not been visited with if and when they object, and we get letters from them. So I just, I wish there was some way that we could encourage that more so that maybe neighbors would understand a little bit better. One of the nice things about this one, it's on the corner, so it doesn't have, there isn't, and there's, there's a lot of distance between it and 1220 on the street behind. But I just wish we had a way of saying, hey, talk to your neighbors and tell them what's happening and what your rules are and, and that kind of thing, that I think we could preclude some of this, some of the objections.
All right, that, that keeps coming up each time we look at a vacation rental. Do we want to make that a part of the responsibility of the owner to contact the neighbors?
Staff does encourage that when we're talking with them before they file their case, to go ahead and visit with the neighbors if they can. I know a case that we actually had last week. One of the owners did go to the neighborhood as best they could, leave notices, and reach out to the neighborhood. So we are seeing the applicants be more proactive.
A little more of that. Yeah, I hate to, I hate to reject anything in anticipation that there might be problems when there actually haven't been any problems yet, you know, but at the same time, you know, this is a residential neighborhood, and it, their voice matters as well. So it would be, it would be nice if before it came before us, whether all the, the issues were ironed out ahead of time, and you just came to us and said, there were some problems, they got it all ironed out, and we're here for you to just, you know, bless it.
And I agree with, with what you're saying. I would also say that it's been, it has been vetted through planning and zoning. We get these cases after they've been presented. So this is really coming also to us as a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Committee, right?
And it had unanimous vote on July 1st.
So that's part of it, too, because I always consider, you know, if we have the, if we have these other boards and commissions, I always take that into consideration as well. And this is just for, this is just for me. And, you know, the other thing I think about also is that it is a conditional use permit, which to me implies or means that if those conditions aren't met, then the permit gets pulled and it's no longer able to operate, which is why it's conditional. So that always gives me a level, I guess, a, a level of some reassurance that we're not saying that something can happen and then we have no control after that. But I also understand, I don't think any of us probably want to have a short-term rental next door to us, and I get that, and then we have to consider private property owners and, and, right? So it's, it's not always easy to make these decisions.
Are there any other Airbnbs in this particular, just within a couple blocks of this?
No, they're not.
They're not?
And as you can see from the map, this does back up to commercial, so it's half block off.
Okay, that, that is, you're right, that is commercial in front of it, yeah.
You know, the, I think the concern is, and I've been approving these vacation rentals, the concern is, okay, we've got a good ordinance, and it does protect the neighbors, but you've got neighbors who say, we don't want this, you know, it's gonna ruin our neighborhood or whatever else. And that's, that's a balance that is, is hard for, I think, us as a council, because we don't want to ignore the concerns of these citizens. But we know also that we've got folks, that this is the way they make their living, with vacation rentals. Now, we'll say, I think this is the 53rd one in the city, I believe. Now, I'm here, very inflated numbers about out in the county, but I was talking with a councilman from Fredericksburg. They have 700 vacation rentals in Fredericksburg, and they are now trying to define their ordinance. So I want to say to the city staff, I thank you for putting together a good ordinance, and, and as council, we'll continue struggling with this, you know, in terms of, okay, when do we say no? But anyway.
Yeah, that kind of goes back to, I brought that up, I think, the first CUP that came before council since I've been elected, and I brought that up as, you know, we continue to approve these with the same standards, and it comes up to the point where if we're gonna want to deny one of them, and it's the exact same standards, we really, I don't think we have the ability to do that, you know? And, and so addressing these concerns, especially those of Councilman Eichner, that's where my proposal to look at these, our ordinances, and to create some type of policy, whether it's going to be so many in a certain zoning location, because imagine if we had all of the residents on that street come to us and ask for a CUP permit, would we allow all of them to or no? So that's something that we need to, we need to look at addressing. I agree that the concerns are out there, and so somehow, I guess, I don't know if staff can provide anything to council on, change, or making some type of policy on how we do that.
Yeah, and, and I've talked to Mr. Hoppy about that, and we are gonna look at conditional use permit, you know, other changes we need to make or whatever else. I hear Ms. Clarkson at the point of planning and zoning looks at this and makes a recommendation to us, and I always, of course, appreciate that. And the other thing is, we are having virtually no complaints from the existing, in regard to the existing vacation rental, so.
That's what I was gonna ask, have there been any violations to the ordinance or the conditional use permits, any violations?
No. Through our code enforcement office, the last two, two and a half years, we have had one complaint, a short-term rental that did not have a conditional use permit, applied for their conditional use permit after they had started operating, and that one actually was denied by a planning and zoning commission.
Okay.
We are still working with PD to compare some other general complaints, you know, after hours and weekends to see if they match up with our list of short-term rentals, so we'll have more details on that.
That's good to know.
So they would, PD would respond to it and then notify you, or code enforcement?
It sounds like you're saying you're going through code enforcement records.
Most of our calls go through code enforcement, but if, for example, if there was just a noise complaint, Development Services may not hear about that on Monday morning if it was something that PD was able to take care of. But we are gonna double. But we are going to double-check that list and kind of verify.
The, the other thing is, if we ever tried to undo a CUP, how difficult is that? I mean, it's.
That's a good question.
Just, you know, what does it take?
Yeah, it would come back before this board, I mean, before council, I mean, because you, I mean, essentially, you'd be removing a permit to operate a certain use, and under our ordinance, under state law, that's a zoning change, and so we would have to do notice, and you all would have to consider at that point.
Would it go before P and Z, before us?
I, I don't know if it would.
Or just directly to us?
I, I don't, I don't know under state, I don't think under state law, but I'd have to check our zoning code to see if it would have to, but I.
Yes, these are all good things to bring up at a, at a future item when we look at all of this.
All right, counsel, any, any other questions? Okay? At 6:31, the public hearing is, is open, and if individuals would like to speak to this.
Ms. Francina?
Got one over there in the corner, Mr. Stricki.
Mr. Stricki, 6:15, Earl Garrett, this is an important issue. Fredericksburg is having a big problem because they have over 700, and they don't have an ordinance, like Kerrville does. They have an inspection. You pass the inspection, you get a short-term rental. There's no CUP process in Fredericksburg, and they have 700 of them, so we can't, it's not an apples-to-apples situation. We have a very good ordinance, maybe it needs some tweaking. I've had that conversation with some others, and maybe the conditions need to be looked at. The, the one thing I will comment, Mr. Garcia, is one of the things that isn't brought up in conditions, but is part of the application process and the review, especially if you go to the P and Z meetings, is things like, and this is not an exclusive loose, or an exhaustive list, but things like the location in relationship to amenities. And there have been some that have been denied by P and Z because they're too far from amenities and, and such. There was one up in the Lady Streets, Help Me Judy, Barbara Ann, or right up above the golf course, and it got turned down because it wasn't near anything that made sense for a short-term rental, but that doesn't show up on the condition list. And so I'm not sure a prescriptive list that adds more government oversight on it is actually the right choice, but I think that there's something, obviously, that we need to look at. We can always make things better, and, and there's nothing wrong with that, to look, and maybe it is the best it can be right now, but maybe it could be a little better, and look at those things. So I think that's a really good conversation, and very important. Texas is a very stringent property rights state, and Michael, correct me, but I'm pretty sure that a CUP gives me the right to do something. It also gives the city the right to put conditions upon that use. And so what we need to do is carefully put the conditions in place that apply to that location, but the property owner has the right to do that if they can meet those conditions. Now, a condition can be that location and how far it is from amenities, and maybe I can't move that property. And that makes sense to me, and I'm a commercial broker, I'm not in this business, I don't do that. I'm just telling you what from almost 30 years of real estate I'm thinking, and this is an important conversation to have. Thank you very much.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have other speakers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If not, then I'm open to a motion on 5A.
I'll move that we approve resolution, um, resolution, resolution number 36-2021.
Second.
All right. Okay, did I close the public hearing?
Yes, you did.
No, I didn't close it. 6:33, the public hearing is closed. Okay, we got a motion, do we have a second?
Yes, a second.
Second. All in favor of 5A, let it be known by the raised hand? Okay, thank you, and it passes unanimously. Now, if you read 6A in, Ms. McLeannan.
Ordinance number 2021-18, an ordinance amending Chapter 60 Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, Chapter 60, more commonly known as the City Zoning Code, by changing the zoning of a property known as 3210 Riverside Drive, and out of the Wallace Survey Number 112, abstract number 360, and within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, from a single-family residential zoning district R1 to a general commercial zoning district C3, providing a cumulative clause, providing for severability, providing an effective date, and ordering publication. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing, sir.
All right. Mr. Paxton?
Thank you. This is 3210 Riverside Drive, the corner of Riverside Drive, with 534. To the northeast is zoned C3, to the northwest is a small strip of C3 that connects to that property that fronts on Memorial Boulevard. Beyond that is R1. Across the loop on the Riverside Drive is also zoned R1. The request is consistent with the Kerrville 2050 Future Land Use Plan as community commercial. And on July 1st, planning and zoning recommended approval with unanimous vote.
All right. Okay, this, okay, on Memorial Drive of 27, that's where the old pink motel was, pink, pink housing.
That's correct.
Right, okay, and then you've got a house on the corner.
That's the properties.
This gives you access, who's using it gives you access to the river.
It's like they're using the access, too. Are they using access to the loop?
The old apartments had, I believe, 15 or 20-foot piece of property that actually gave them access to the river here. That's that little sliver of C3. That is all one lot.
Okay.
With the flag that runs down to the river.
Right, right.
Property in question today is the house on the corner, to be zoned C3.
What about screening requirements?
I'm sorry?
If it's going to be abutting a residential, what screening requirements are there?
This actually is not a budding residential, because it does have that other strip of land.
Okay.
So there would not be any screening requirements.
Okay.
Will access be from the loop or from Riverside Drive?
If it's from the loop, that'll have to be approved by TaxDOT, that is the current driveway for the, for the home, as that redevelops, have to be, be dependent upon TaxDOT and what their development plans are. At this time, we do not have any site plan or development plans.
Do we know what type of commercial operation?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it makes sense where it's located, that it could be commercial, but I'd be a little concerned about access onto the loop right there, but.
Okay, questions of Mr. Paxton? Okay. I will tell you, when I was a pastor, I had several church members on Riverside Drive there, and, you know, pretty modest homes, but now that has gotten attention, and there's more things happening right in that area.
To the north along Riverside Drive, based on the previous zoning code, we do have an RV park that's nearing completion. There's another RV park on the far north end of Riverside Drive, on the river, the actual riverbank side.
The tiny houses.
Yes, and there are two or three short-term rentals that have been approved on Riverside Drive as well.
Okay.
So I don't know that the entire block is necessarily in transition. We've also had, just last council meeting, we had the second reading for the zoning from commercial PD to R1 to build a single-family home. So it is definitely a mixed area, but primarily still residential, whether it's short or long-term.
But what a perfect place for Airbnbs, I mean, with the river there, everything, you know, to fit, meet all of those conditions, it does.
Yeah, the, go ahead, anybody else, any other questions?
Go back to that map, the zoning map with the, that's shaded. Approximately, how wide is that strip that goes across?
I believe it's 15 or 20 feet. So that was used, if I'm not mistaken, I think it was used actually as, almost like an alley for garbage trucks.
Is it, I mean, is it, how, how much improvement is on that particular piece?
Don't believe there are any improvements. Both neighboring properties do have a fence, at least along the backyard portion, so it's almost like a fenced alley from the commercial to Riverside Drive.
Okay.
And it could be.
It's fenced already?
Right, that'd be, that wouldn't be consistent with our subdivision code to plat a property that the way it is today.
But could it be, I mean, they could drive on it, they could use it as access.
Yes, it is wide enough for access.
But, but as it exists now, there's already fencing on both sides, is what you're saying?
Last time I drove by.
Last time you drove by, okay, I won't hold you to it, okay.
And we have no, we have no complaints from the letter sent out?
Yeah, no responses.
Right, okay. All right. Any other questions, counsel?
No, I'll just confirm, I'm looking on Google Maps right now, there is fencing on both sides of it right now.
All right. At 6:41, I open the public hearing, if there's anyone to speak to this.
Over here.
Bruce, Mr. Stricki.
Bruce Stricki, 6:15, Earl Garrett, I represent the property owner at 3005-301-503125 and 3135, that's the C3 property there, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
My question's answered.
Perfect.
I mean, I can speak for myself.
Okay. If there are no other speakers to this matter, at 6:41, we are out of the public hearing. All right, do you, what about a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2021-18.
Have we got a motion? Is there a second?
All second.
You got a motion second? All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand? All right, there you go, okay. Now, would you read in 6B for us, Ms. McLeannan?
Ordinance number 2021-19, an ordinance amending Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, such chapter more commonly known as the City Zoning Code, by changing the zoning of a property known as 501 Florence, consisting of Lot 19 and part of Lot 20, Block 25, Westland Place, within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, from a residential transition zoning district RT to a neighborhood commercial zoning district C1, providing a cumulative clause, providing for severability, providing an effective date, ordering publication, and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
All right. Once again, Mr. Paxton?
This is a request for 501 Florence Street, re-zoned from RT to C1, which is a neighborhood commercial district. It is within the strategic catalyst area number four, which runs along most of the corridor of Junction Highway from downtown to about, about the Thompson Bridge. This area is intended to be community commercial, regional commercial, depending on which end of that corridor you're on. Again, the property is currently zoned RT, it was previously an optometrist's office. The business that is purchasing the property, or is moving into the property, is currently operating across the street on the 500 block of Junction Highway. It's about where the, pretty close to where the C is on the current zoning. It's a western wear store that's currently existing, they're just moving to this location for a larger location. The request is consistent with the Future Land Use Plan, zoning approved with unanimous vote on July 1st. Would be pleased to answer any questions.
How many?
Sorry, while you're talking, if you can go back to the zoning map, please, I just wanted to be there. Go ahead, I'm just looking at this.
Thank you. How many actual parking spaces are on this property?
Currently, there are 11 parking spaces. Just a second, Mr. Garcia, and go to the air.
Go ahead.
There, there could be room for more on the northwest side of the property if they needed, based on the square footage of the property, and retail, there would be required 11 spaces, so they do need.
Okay, so they've got, they've got the minimum. And it looks like there's two off of the Junction Highway, and then the others are on Florence and Center?
There's actually about four.
Oh, there's four there.
Back here off of the alley.
Okay.
There are three here.
Okay.
There's an island with an existing tree, and another four.
Okay.
And then, again, if they needed to expand, not that it would be ideal, but they could get a curb cut off of Florence and actually have parking go through the property.
Oh, okay.
As of right now, most of the parking and traffic does not impact the neighborhood, since it doesn't need to go into the front of the property.
I've, I've had an, at least one neighbor who was concerned about the number of parking spaces because of what it was being changed to, so.
Additional requirements for changing zoning, as far as the two abutting zones, same question, I guess, as before?
As an existing structure, there'd be no additional requirements. If they were to do any changes to the property, that, of course, any requirements in the code would apply.
Any other questions, counsel? Okay, open the public hearing at 6:46. If there are no speakers, close the public hearing at 6:46. Okay, thank you, Mr. Paxton. All, now, I want to hear a motion in regard to this matter.
I'll move that we approve ordinance number 2021-19 on the first reading.
All right. And by the way, this is passed unanimously with P and Z, but, okay.
I'll second. I'll second.
Second, okay. All in favor, let it be known by raised hands? Okay, thank you. All right, let's move to 7A, Ms. McLeannan.
Presentation of fiscal year 2022 proposed budget.
All right. Mr. Hoppy?
Good evening, Mayor, counsel. Pleased to bring to you the proposed budget for fiscal year 2022. As you know, there's a tremendous amount of work that goes into this budget, and first off, I want to thank Ms. Julie Behrens and Trina Rodriguez for all their help, particularly over the course of the summer, being shorthanded like they have been, and putting together what I consider an excellent proposed budget. This takes many, many months of work. We began working with our larger departments, as you well know, really throughout the year. It's a, it's a year-long budget process, but very much heavy and earnest, starting in the late winter timeframe, January and February, culminating as, as we go along with revenue projections throughout the spring, and then begin the budget process with the council during the summer, after your council retreat, until we've heard which prioritization efforts that you want to move forward over the next 12 months, based off of the feedback from Kerrville 2050 and the 471 action items that are presented within that document. And so then we take those, and take our revenue projections, and mix all that up, and work through the, the workshop process with you over the course of the summer, and ultimately file a proposed budget with you at the end of the July timeframe. So with that, that brings us to August 10th, which is tonight, presentation of the proposed budget, proposed tax rate, and then you've got two subsequent elements on August 24th and September 14th related to the actual budget and tax rate votes. Moving forward. Current situation, fortunately, we are in a much different situation than we have been really the last two fiscal years, particularly the last fiscal year. As you recall, it was a very austere budget. We had had mid-year budget cuts in fiscal year 20, and went into a fiscal year 21 that was very austere, it was very conservative in nature, and so as we look at the numbers in comparison, I think it's important to remember really fiscal year 20 as a comparison, more so than a fiscal year 21, because it really presents a trend line that I think is more accurate to the trajectory that Kerrville has been presenting over a longer course of time. The local economy, fortunately, remained relatively strong throughout the pandemic. In fact, despite expected shortfalls in a number of different areas, hotel, motel, sales tax, et cetera, really, we were very fortunate, and, and much of that is due to our regional economy, and being that hub economy that, that we strive very hard for within our economic development efforts. Kerr County unemployment reported at 5.5% as of June 2021, that's compared to 7.8 in June of 2020, and then, of course, compared to the Texas unemployment rate of 6.5, and the national unemployment rate of about 5.9, so doing better than the state, doing better than the nation. Low interest rates, and seeing inflationary factors, certainly, and that affects us in a number of ways, not only in buying power for our employees, and cost of housing, and the cost of the food that goes on their table, but also in our construction costs. uh, but also in our construction costs. As you know, we're a very capital-intensive organization in what we have to do, putting water pipes in the ground, putting sewer pipes in the ground, putting facilities up. And so we're seeing those rising inflationary costs in construction is concerning. Uh, the local economy, uh, and economic development continues to grow, and certainly we have a strong partnership, uh, with KDC, uh, and our other community partners, uh, and EIC, and, and continue to grow that, uh, that, uh, local economy. Revenues continue to be strong in the current budget year, especially sales tax, uh, which is anticipated to be substantially better than the original fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. Uh, and fiscal twenty-two budget theme, moving forward, uh, hopefully getting back and setting a tone for our efforts to get back to normal operations. Certainly, we're seeing a local surge, uh, in COVID-nineteen now, but, you know, our hope is that, that, that we're able to flatten that curve and get past that, hopefully within this fiscal year, and that when we get to the point of, of the next fiscal year, uh, we can begin to put that, uh, beyond us and continue to move forward. So as a summary for fiscal year twenty-two budget, uh, general fund and water fund are balanced and meet our reserve policy requirements. We're proposing to reduce the property tax rate to, uh, five oh nine three, um, from point five one one six in fiscal year twenty-one. We project our sales tax revenues at two point five percent higher than the year-end fiscal twenty twenty-one estimates. And again, that's about that trajectory, looking at, you know, carrying over from fiscal year twenty and looking at, uh, you know, where we were, um, throughout this year versus what the original budget was in fiscal year twenty-one. Incremental proposed, uh, increases to water and sewer rates. As you recall, uh, the council did a, a very extensive overview in twenty nineteen, uh, with a rate study. Um, rates were not increased, uh, in that twenty twenty timeframe, given the pandemic conditions that the local, uh, uh, experienced locally. Uh, increased hotel occupancy tax projections, again, getting back to where that trajectory was in that fiscal year nineteen, pre-pandemic level. Uh, and we've been fortunate, uh, we did see some, some dips certainly in, in projections of hotel occupancy tax, uh, throughout the pandemic, but we performed relatively, uh, strong, uh, as a, a regional, uh, element of folks that, uh, were escaping metro areas, uh, maybe weren't wanting to get onto planes, uh, but were wanting to, to still, uh, have some tourism, uh, semi-locally within the state. We are proposing COLA and step increases, uh, for our public safety professionals, uh, with some market adjustments in select areas, uh, based off recruitment and retention. We are proposing reinstatement of general government employee merit raises and a COLA element, again, uh, referencing those inflationary factors, uh, that we're seeing, uh, and referencing back to fiscal year, uh, uh, nineteen, uh, that saw budget reductions, uh, and in fact, uh, payroll reductions, uh, and then a, a skipping essentially of, of any, uh, elements related to payroll in fiscal year twenty-one. Increases in personnel costs related to full-year positions that were previously budgeted for partial years, uh, and then, uh, many positions that were frozen. And then continued increases, uh, certainly in street maintenance funding, as we know, that can be a very major priority, uh, for the community. So obviously, this is a priority-based budget, uh, as we've done for net several years now. And so we want to talk about the key priority areas, again, going back to Kerrville twenty fifty and the major chapters, uh, within that document, uh, and the, the elements that we're attacking and proposing to attack within this fiscal year twenty-two budget. Community and neighborhood placemaking, uh, continued focus on the implementation of the Doyle Community Area Development Plan. Uh, that's been several years, uh, in play, and one of the key elements of that, uh, as you may well know, is what we have, uh, underway right now, and, and that is major street reconstruction efforts, millions of dollars worth of street reconstruction efforts that are occurring today and will carry over into next fiscal year. Uh, that's not the only element, but that's one of the major elements. Uh, evaluation of additional area development plans. Uh, some of the examples, uh, may include, uh, callous areas around the medical district and callous areas around the Kerrville Airport. Downtown revitalization, uh, continued investment in downtown infrastructure, and the hope is that we will be able to leverage funding that is being provided, uh, via statewide grants. And if we're successful with those grants, uh, then we will be able to leverage our local dollars, uh, to extend those further to make infrastructure enhancements in the downtown. Uh, capital investment specifically into the infrastructure at the Buttholesworth Memorial Library, uh, in a number of different functional areas. Uh, and then, uh, including, um, the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center, uh, which has had a very successful philanthropic, uh, activity over the course of this last year, and we're hopeful that they will be able to achieve their goals, uh, going in, uh, hopefully by the end of this calendar year. On the economic development front, as I mentioned before, continued focus on regional retail recruitment that was very, very strong for us, uh, throughout the pandemic. And so we want to continue, uh, to be the primary player, uh, on that and bringing that regional retail, uh, into the area and filling those gaps that, that maybe are not being served within the marketplace, uh, currently. Uh, and then supporting efforts of our partnership, uh, with the Kerr Economic Development Corporation, uh, and continuing to bring high-quality, well-paying jobs and retaining and expanding existing employers, uh, which, as you all know, is eighty percent of our economic development efforts, uh, is, is continuing to expand upon the folks that we have, the, the local businesses already. Housing, uh, we know it continues to be an issue. As we spoke about before, housing costs, uh, are unfortunately going in the wrong direction, uh, particularly in relation to our workforce housing efforts. Uh, and so continue to partner with the private sector to facilitate the expansion of workforce housing opportunities, uh, within Kerrville and within, uh, our region. Mobility and transportation, implementation of our remaining twenty nineteen bond funding for recon, street reconstruction. As I mentioned before, a big, uh, portion of that, uh, in, in, in the near term, i- is within that Doyle community area. And then continued enhancement, uh, to funding levels for street maintenance, as I mentioned before, uh, and that's our annual maintenance program, not just the, the overall street reconstruction, uh, but our other techniques that we employ, uh, based off slurry seals, based off of milling and overlay. Uh, so it, it is, uh, taking that forward and continuing to move forward with the pavement management plan as prescribed, uh, several years ago. Investment sidewalks, pedestrian safety improvements, and other multi-modal transportation enhancements, particularly those that we're able to, again, leverage statewide grant dollars on. Parks, open space and river corridor, uh, the completion of Parks and Recreation Master Plan update, which again helps us be successful, uh, in, uh, grant opportunities that may be out there. Uh, that's ensuing right now. We think that will continue to, uh, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board will continue to work through that throughout the tall, tall timeframe. Uh, and then investment in our tourism economy through event support, quality of life assets like the River Trail, uh, and our other great park assets that serve both the residents of our community as well as the visitors that come here and spend dollars. Public facilities and services, uh, again, emphasis on, uh, recruiting and retaining high-quality city workforce. Uh, you had the chiefs before you in workshop today that talked about the struggles that they have on a number of fronts and being able to do that. Uh, and so this budget, uh, presents techniques to be able to, uh, both through market adjustments as well as facility enhancements that, that help us on that front. Building high-performing city organization by empowering our employees, the renewed focus on training and leadership development. Unfortunately, that is one of the things that we did have to cut back on, uh, in fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty-one. Uh, and so the hope is that we are able to, uh, both recruit and retain our existing employees and grow our existing employees, uh, by being able to get them the appropriate training, uh, that they need to have to be able to do their jobs and do their jobs better. Uh, and then community, progressing the community's priority to invest in public safety operations and the facilities they operate. Be a new multi-departmental public safety complex. We won't be able to solve it in fiscal year twenty-two, but we can begin to solve it in fiscal year twenty-two. Uh, and addressing public safety equipment needs, uh, and we haven't had an opportunity to, to speak on this extensively, uh, but we are. We talked about some of the, the IT infrastructure, uh, dispatch infrastructure a little bit earlier today in workshop, uh, and that continues to be a, a major hurdle for us going forward, uh, and how we, we, we best address that not only in that IT infrastructure, but in what building that goes into, and not throwing good money after bad. Water wastewater drainage, completion of the update to water wastewater master plan, uh, that is in process right now. We hope to have that completed by the spring timeframe, ready for next year's budget season. Uh, and then continued implementation of the long-range water supply plan. Uh, and that long-range water supply plan, as you know, we've been very aggressive on. Uh, we do have, uh, a new, uh, well, the Ellenberger well that is coming online here in the near future, so it is, um, continue to work that plan. Uh, we plan our work and we work our plan. And then implementation of the twenty nineteen bond funding, as I mentioned before, uh, related to streets, uh, also related to stormwater. Uh, we do hope to, uh, we have been working with Tech dot on one of those key priority elements, and that is that lower street and take-it-easy drainage element, uh, which we anticipate going to bid, uh, here in the next couple of months.
You're de- planning a party for one.
Uh, and then building resilience in the city's utility network, uh, through backup power generation systems. And again, uh, this is an element, and we'll talk about that more when we have a legislative update, but, um, we have received basically an unfunded mandate, uh, to continue to build resilience through, uh, backup power generation and, and, and trying to better, uh, serve power or serve water and utility services for up to forty-eight hours, uh, when the state, uh, doesn't provide power to us. Uh, and so, uh, we're hopeful that we can be successful in some grant opportunities to, to be able to better do that. So again, just hit some quick highlights about initiatives as we move forward with Kerrville twenty fifty and fiscal year twenty-two. Significant street reconstruction projects, priority drainage projects, continued focus on workforce housing, additional funding for annual street maintenance, progressing plans for a public safety complex, uh, crossing, uh, the Guadalupe River with some grant-funded utility crossings, uh, water and wastewater system extensions, uh, enhancements to the library complex, including the Heritage Center, uh, completion of water and wastewater plan master update, completion of the Parks Master Plan update, uh, continued ongoing funding for our neighborhood enhancement team, and then area development plans. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Julie Behrens.
Thank you, VA. So before I get started, I just want to say I'm excited to present this. Um, it's been a long work in progress, as EA said, and really started back in February with, uh, departments working hard to get their baseline budget set. And then, um, special thanks to Katrina for nights and weekends with me over the past couple of months, and, uh, EA for supporting us and bringing us cookies whenever we felt like we did. We appreciate all the support. Um, so I want to get started with just overall looking at citywide, um, citywide expenditures here. And so, uh, we're proposing expenditures of seventy-nine point one million or seventy-one point nine if you net the interfund transfers. And just explain that a little bit better. So interfund transfers are counted as an expense to one department and a revenue for the other. So that the transfers aren't actual cash, uh, changing hands, but just an accounting method that we use. So we like to show it both ways, just so you understand. Um, general fund, water fund, and capital projects account for seventy-eight percent of our spending. That's, um, about in line with what we typically do in those larger funds. And both the general fund and the water fund are both balanced and meet reserve requirements.
And the reserve requirements are twenty-five percent in general.
That's correct.
And what, what in water?
Thirty-five in water.
Thirty-five in water?
Yes, that's correct. So moving on to revenues, um, so as we go through this presentation, again, I'm gonna just say again what EA said. Just keep in mind that we're making references to increases here, and these are compared to original twenty twenty-one budget numbers. So twenty twenty-one was actually approved at, with a decrease over twenty twenty. So you will see some increases that might make you ask some questions, but that's the biggest reason why, and we'll talk about that a little bit more as we go through here. So total revenue in the general fund of thirty point four million, uh, property tax and sales tax as usual, contributing to the largest portion of that at sixty-three point five percent. Um, our overall revenues increased to two point four million or eight, eight point six percent compared to that fiscal year original twenty twenty-one budget, but only one point eight million over FY twenty twenty. So you can see the difference there.
Or what over, over?
One point eight over fiscal year twenty twenty. Um, increases are primarily in sales tax, uh, which we've talked about, um, in length, and then service revenue, uh, which is gonna be our landfill, uh, fees and those kind of things, and then operating transfers in. We'll talk about that more as we go through. So taking a look at property tax, um, this chart right here is specifically referencing the change in percentage of tax rate. So you can see that while revenues increased year to year, the percentage of the tax rate is actually reducing. So, um, you know, we still make every effort to use funds conservatively. Um, we did have this year twenty-eight point nine million dollars in new appraised value, so that's just new construction or additions to current, uh, properties. Moving on to the next slide, a little bit more on new property valuation. So, um, if you think about new, it refers to new building, but also potentially a new addition to a current structure. So a new garage or a new, uh, cabin in the back or something like that would also be considered new. And every year it varies a little bit, but just looking at the way the new construction fell out, uh, varies widely from year to year, depending on kind of what's going on with the economy. Um, in twenty twenty-two budget year, so the twenty twenty-one tax rule, we're looking at eighty-seven percent in single family, um, that, um, counts for, uh, a portion of that new property tax valuation. Four percent is commercial, eight percent is multifamily, and then small, um, increases on the others.
Are there dollars on, on these percents?
I'm sorry?
Does this, or does this equate to dollars of value added?
Um, it probably does, and I can probably get those for you.
I was just curious. I mean, that's a really eye-opening.
Well, total new value dollar, uh, revenue was a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars and some change, if I'm speaking right, so battle these together.
You're saying eighty-seven percent of that came from?
That's correct.
Single-family residential?
That's correct. Mm-hmm. Last year, we saw a little bit more on the commercial side than we're seeing this year. So again, it just varies from year to year, depending on, you know, what construction projects are going on and, you know, what other things are happening in the economy overall. Okay, this next slide is looking at general fund revenues related to property tax. So we are proposing a rate reduction from the current rate of, uh, point five one one six to point five zero nine three. Uh, this is the fourth rate reduction that we've had in overall property tax in five years. The rate has stayed the same or decreased for twelve straight years. And our net taxable value increase was six point six percent on our next, our net assessed taxable value. That's actually down, uh, in twenty twenty-one, it was nine point eight percent, but if you remember, uh, what happened with appraised values in, in twenty-one.
By net, you mean taking into consideration all the exemptions?
Right.
And this is the total tax rule you're talking about?
That's correct. Yes. Okay. Then final slide on, or maybe two more slides on property tax here. So even though, uh, properties may increase in value, those that are frozen are not increasing in what they're paying. So keeping that in mind, you can see that twenty-nine percent of our overall valuation is frozen. Um, so just figuring if they were paying the full tax rate, that affects our revenue by four hundred and fifty-two thousand. So pretty, pretty substantial there. We have to consider that when we're looking at overall, uh, valuations and generation of revenue. So this slide is showing you an increase in frozen tax value, uh, since two thousand and ten. And it's just interesting to see, um, that the overall frozen value increased sixty-four percent, but the overall taxable value increased fifty percent. So interesting, um.
Say that again?
So the overall frozen value increased sixty-four percent in that twelve-year period of time, and the overall taxable value on, uh, all properties was fifty percent. So interesting, um, to see, just says something about the demographics of our, our community. Moving on to sales tax, I know that we've talked about this a whole lot in workshops and then in, in prior meetings. Uh, sales tax continues to be strong. Um, you know, we did, uh, project relatively conservatively, given, you know, that thirty percent of our sales tax revenue is, is made up of five, you know, large taxpayers. So we want to make sure that we're accounting for anything that could potentially go wrong, and we hope that sales tax continues to come in better. Uh, we can always make adjustments to that later, uh, but with everything that's been going on in the economy the last few years, we'd just rather, rather keep it kind of close and, and pay close attention to that. So, um, we're budgeting a two point five percent, um, over what we're estimating twenty-one to be. Now, that could change just depending on how the next few months, uh, of sales tax come in. Uh, that, that, uh, projection is actually six point, I'm sorry, twenty-one was six point four less than twenty twenty. So keeping in mind there, that we went down in twenty-one compared to what we did in fiscal year twenty.
I have a question about what you said on the two point five percent. You said that number can change. Are you talking about the two point five percent number can change based on actuals? Are you talking about the actual budget number?
The actual, well, we're not gonna change the actual budget number, but if it comes in better.
The percent may not be two point five.
Percent may not be exactly right. We're just doing an estimation of where we think twenty-one's gonna land.
I just wanted to know.
Right, right.
Change numbers and budgets.
Exactly. No, we won't be changing any numbers unless there's an amendment done. So we'll just have to see how strong that comes in, and if it continues to see the growth that's seen now, then we may come back to you and ask for amendment to that, so.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to expenditures in the general fund. Um, we added this graph that's to show you for key priority areas and how we're spending money. So with the focus on moving forward with twenty fifty priorities, you know, we've, we've stayed on track with that even through the pandemic and through everything else that's gone on in the economy the last few years, but really just taking a push and, and stepping back up to meeting some of those expectations in Kerrville twenty fifty. Um, so we do ask departments to stay in line with Kerrville twenty fifty when they're bringing us their proposed departmental budgets, uh, and kind of really showing us how their metrics are supporting what the overall plan is for the city. Um, you can see that Kerrville twenty fifty identified public safety as the top priority, and that's how we're budgeting money, um, followed by public, uh, facilities and services. Okay, so this next slide shows expenditures by category, um, basically just looking at the breakdown. You can see, of course, personnel is our largest expense, um, which is pretty typical. And then looking on the departmental side, you can see that public safety takes up the bulk of that, um, at sixty-three point two percent of our expenses. So we're proposing, sorry?
And we're, we are budgeting for fully staffed according to even, how, how, how is that, what does that look like with the budgeting?
Yeah, so we, we do anticipate that, you know, if, we, we talked about some of the staffing shortages earlier. shortages earlier, right? We were realistic that, you know, we're not going to all of a sudden make 10 hires on October 1. So we do anticipate some feathering in of as those recruitments happen. And certainly, you know, we're realistic that we may lose some personnel across the year. So we do anticipate that within the budget process.
Okay, we're going on and move on to a little bit of explanation on general fund expenditures here, just looking at significant changes. Again, reminding you that these are compared to the FY 21 originals. We talked through these. So personnel up 6.2% compared to 2021 original budget, but 3.1% compared to the 21 amended budget. So remember, we did come back and re-implement some pay cuts. We also re-implemented public safety step increases and those kind of things.
And like to go with what EA was saying and making those comparisons, we had basically a freeze on salaries in 2020. So if we were to say, look at 2020 and say what we would have done in a normal year would be maybe 3%. If we had done a 3%, this would be a 3%.
Right, which would be about average with what we, what we kind of do. But we didn't have merit increases last year, and then in 2020, there were actually some.
I just wanted to be, yeah, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that number because it's, if you don't know why that number is sitting there, that, you know, is important.
It is important to know what you're comparing to, because 21 was a very different year for us, because we were building the 21 budget right as everything was closed down for COVID. So we budgeted on the very, very conservative side, and that did not include any pay increases at all. So personnel does include, as EA mentioned, a market adjustment to the Police Department's step plan with the hopes of really just increasing our ability to recruit and retain staff. The step plan increases for public safety, of course, a 2% cost of living increase for all employees. I believe that was requested by council in the first council workshop for the summer. And then regular merit increases returning for all general government employees. Supplies increase of 7.3%, so expecting to see increased materials as we're seeing nationwide. Purchases of some items that were delayed when we did budget cuts in 2020 that we did not reinstate in 2021. And we have picked up some of those items as we've seen some strength in our budget, but we still haven't gotten back to what we need to be doing there. Maintenance up 12.7%, primarily driven by some software maintenance agreements and then equipment maintenance, of course. And then other things, 20% increase in other expenditures, but this is largely related to community support, which, if you remember, we cut KEDC from their $50,000 budget in '20, all the way down to 39.5 in 2021, and we're bringing them up to their request of 62,500. So that makes up a large part of that percentage there. We also do have a 5% increase in employee medical insurance that is going to be covered by the Employee Benefits Trust. So there won't be any increase or any cost to the employees for that. And then in addition of long-term disability policy that will also not have any impact to the employees. And actually, that's being paid out of the Employee Benefit Trust. So that probably should have been on a different slide, but I thought it was important to mention that there.
So I'm going to cover General Capital Projects Fund for one second, so I can give Julie a breath, and then she can regroup and attack the rest of it from there. So General Capital Projects Fund, primary expenditures, and again, this is not inclusive of everything that's included within your budget. As you recall, you've got the community investment plans. It's kind of, we call them the big sheets, the 11-by-17 big sheets that went through with you guys during the July workshops. But Public Safety Complex is one of the primary ones. Again, back to the presentation that was provided to you during the workshop earlier today, and hitting that primary activity that was identified within Curville 2050, which has been identified within the Space Needs Assessment, and which would provide for this year for us to be able to move forward with the real estate purchase and the architectural design of the facility in this environment where we are seeing rising inflationary costs, rising construction costs, and rising real estate costs. So again, a delay in that will provide for a higher cost of those elements in the future. Year two, street reconstruction at 2.3 million. Year two drainage improvements, 1.6 million. Westminster and street improvements estimated at 1.2 million. Airport projects, including possible area development plan and T-Hunger partnerships at 187,000. Airport crosswind runway improvements of 175,000, in-kind support. And again, this budget does propose 6.5 to 7 million of certificates of obligation for that public safety complex specifically related to real estate, architecture, and then any remainder that would go towards a building. And then street improvements carryover using cash funding from fiscal year 20, and street reconstruction and drainage improvements continuing to utilize the 2019 certificates of obligation funding, which was issued in 2019, for 10.5 million.
What, the carryover, 1.2 million? What is that again?
So again, there, we do have carryover cash balance, basically, right. Yeah. So remember that paving season goes beyond just the summer, and so it often pushes into the next fall. And so it's not, a lot of these capital projects carry over into different operational years.
Yeah. And so that's part of the, what, 2.1 that's in the?
No, no.
That's in addition?
That's correct. Yeah. So the 2.1 roughly that's within this year's budget is straight out operations fund. So it is not looking, so we'll utilize that as best we can. And in fact, that may go to fund the Westminster project, depending on bids there towards a reconstruction piece. But no, that does not, that's right. That is exclusive of the other.
So we're talking 3 million new dollars to put into streets.
That's correct. That's correct. Yeah. Over the course of the next, you know, 12 months, you're looking at probably 6 to 7 million dollars overall of street re.
When you, when the remaining funds and then carryover funds and then maintenance operations.
I guess that's awesome.
Yeah. So this budget continues to be strong on streets.
How much are, how much are we planning on, on spending on the paving for that for this year? For the, for the, for the 1.8, I think that was?
Yeah, it's 2 million 50,000, I believe.
I think he's asking fiscal year 21, is that what you're asking?
Right, the one we're in right now.
Can we bring in that, I can bring that back to you whenever we do our financial update and we start looking at estimates. They're paving right now.
Right.
So it's ongoing. Expenses change every day. And so really, the idea is they get as much done as they possibly can, weather permitting and supply permitting. So they're paving every single day. So as much of it as they can, let's put it that way.
And when looking. So what happens when that, that delta doesn't get spent, if for whatever reason, if we, maybe we have a really wet August and September, and they're not able to do as much paving as they can, we don't just sweep that into something else. We carry that over. That's what this carryover is. We carry that over into streets, so it stays in streets and it goes towards street maintenance. It just may not happen in this fiscal year.
If you remember, you may remember when we did our year-end budget amendment at the end of 2020, part of our surplus was moved over into the Capital Projects Fund for specifically for streets.
Okay. Well, and when looking at that, that estimate number, whenever you can get that to us, I was curious on the actual money budget without the bond funds that are allocated to it. So just separating that out whenever you have that number?
It's very separated, yes. So general fund money is specifically for maintenance and operations.
Right.
And then capital money is specifically for bond money or set aside money that we put over into the capital.
And this is 2.1 that I'm pulling out of my head. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
For this current year?
For paving or?
For this coming up here.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's pretty much what I was getting the gist at, and what the estimate would be by the end of the year, if you have something like that. I was just curious.
Right, right. Yeah, there's an estimate for that. And we will be, as we get closer to year end, we'll be able to give that better. There's really no way to say, because a lot of it has to depend on whether and what they can get done.
So what, we usually come back to you guys with a budget amendment, usually in kind of the late fall, winter timeframe.
I was going to ask if that can come to us.
Because we have a number of elements. You talked about sales tax earlier, and I had some questions about that. Remember that it's collected two months in arrears. And so that's one of those cleanup pieces that we have to figure out what our actual year-end sales tax collection was. One of the other main ones is, you know, where did we actually end up on streets and some of those other major capital project pieces that we then carry over?
Yeah.
I want to just have, I don't, I'm just really curious, that for the public safety complex, looking at the 6.5 to 7 million dollars, I think in the budget, it's 6.5 we have in there. Is there a reason why that's in there when we're looking at possibly 7?
Well, we just don't know what it's going to be. We know that the ordinance is going to be written to a max of 7 million.
Right.
And until we know what the rates are, until we know, you know, what the negotiated sell is, you know, we want to use the maximum capacity we can, obviously, to be able to make this money go as far as we can. We just don't know what that is, because it changes from time to time. Rates change every day, and when you're talking about that many dollars, there, you know, a quarter of a basis point can make a huge difference.
It'll just be a placeholder until we possibly need to make an amendment.
And you will, there won't be an amendment. It will actually come to you for approval on that amount.
Okay.
That will actually come to you for approval before the sale actually happens, if you choose to go that way.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Behrens, if citizens ask us, what is your, what is your budget for the next year? What total are we looking at?
79 million dollars in expenses and 71 million dollars in revenue.
Okay.
Keeping in mind that the gap between capital projects, and we'll talk about that a little bit if I didn't talk about that already. So capital projects money can be received one year, and not just capital projects money, but any fund that would be unbalanced. So use the library, for example. If I get $2 million this year from a anonymous donor, we're not going to spend $2 million this year. So the Library Memorial Fund doesn't have to be balanced. So we'll put that money into fund balance, and then we could spend it in the next fiscal year. So that's why you'll see a gap a lot of times where expenses are larger than revenues, because there's a lot of money that gets received in one year and doesn't get spent until the next. So we may have the expenditures in '22, but we actually receive the money in '21. So you'll oftentimes see a gap there.
Again, remember, we talked about a capital-intensive business like the city. And so it's common for us to save up, and then we do capital projects in a big way. And so we may have some of those expenditures that we've been saving up for.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions so far?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I appreciate the thoroughness of what you're doing in the presentation of the budget and the development of the budget. As you mentioned, going back to February, when the departments began to come in with their requests and develop their budgets, and just, just the whole process, and the fact that you've got to follow state regs, you got to follow city regs, you're audited, we've got outside people in finances that look at what's happening. It's just a solid operation.
Well, thank you. We're proud of it. We do a lot of work on it and try to really stay within those guidelines.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else you have on capital?
Nope.
Okay, we're going to move on to asset replacement. I know we've talked a lot about this in budget workshops. And so I probably should have put it at the top of the page, but you'll notice at the bottom of the page, we do have a general fund transfer in to just keep building that pay-as-you-go program that we've been talking about, a $440,000. We feel really good about that, you know, given what we have expenditures for this year. We do have a new ambulance that's going to be bought this year, and our ambulances are on a replacement program that rotates, whether they just replace the box or they replace the entire ambulance. So Chief Maloney keeps a really good program going over there so that we keep our ambulances running in a good condition. We are proposing a new paver for our Streets Department. This has been looked at for the last couple of years, and we're going to try to go ahead and get that purchased this year. The purchase of three new patrol vehicles, new servers for information technology, those are constantly changing, and then these are constantly changing, backup electrical generators. That was identified, of course, after the winter storm. And while it won't meet all of our needs, it'll be a start, and we can continue to plug away at that and potentially look at some grant funding for some other generators. Terrace bike for the sports complex. So this is an aerator of sorts that really just keeps the grounds in good working order. So Shane has requested this for a few years, and so we're putting this on our asset replacement budget this year. It can also be used in other places, so potentially the golf course and some other areas like that. Lucas device for EMS, that is the automatic chest compression machine that I'm sure you've seen, and those are on a, on a replacement schedule as well. And then a security gate for Curville Shriner Park. And that, that's come up a few times, and it's really a security issue for their staff over there. So we included that. And then, of course, our lease program, which we've had really good luck with in year one, and we want to continue that. So right now, we have seven vehicles that are existing leases that, that's automatically going to be expenses out of this fund. And then we have six new vehicles that we can replace. So ordinarily, we might be able to replace two vehicles, because we're spending the entire purchase price and then having to keep those vehicles for 20 years. Now we have the ability to pay less, get more, and then turn those vehicles so that we keep us safely. Okay, back to our favorite topic, general fund debt service. I know we talked a lot about this at four o'clock. We're going to talk about it a little bit more, maybe in a little bit less detail than we did earlier. Just reminding you again about the refunding. And we really do try to take advantage anytime there's a refunding opportunity or dropping interest rates. And we see we can save some money overall. We try to get that done and bring that to you for approval if that were to happen. We are proposing the issuance of the 6.5 to 7 million dollar certificate. And in the official statement or the, you know, the potential proposed official statement, it does have a max of 7 million dollars. Just to answer your question, it's written in there as a max, just depending on the rate. So this would be for the acquisition of land and potential design of a new public safety complex. We're in a very low interest environment right now. Again, I will say that we're estimating 2.86. That's coming from our financial advisor, who's been in this business 20-plus years and does an excellent job of advising us. But we really do think that that's conservative, but she would rather give us something higher and us be able to come back to you with good news than really underestimate and us have to come back to you and ask for a higher interest rate approval. Debt portion of our property tax rate is proposed to remain unchanged at the 7.35. So that's, you know, seven cents on the dollar, $100 of assessed value. And then general debt service again is 12.8 million. So that's the portion of our overall debt that's being paid for by property tax. We talked about this a little bit earlier, overall debt service. This is just a little bit more detail on the overall city. As we break down that 67 million dollars in debt, keeping in mind that the Water Fund pays for its 43.6 million, not property tax. EIC pays for their percentage of debt service, which is 10.6 million, again, not paid for by property tax. And then that general debt service obligation that is paid for by property tax is 12.8 million, which is 19% of the overall total. So y'all saw these earlier, but for the benefit of people who weren't here at the four o'clock meeting. So property tax supported debt. This, this chart is taking a look at cities that compare to us in size and bond rating. So we are a double A-rated city, which is very stable. And I shared with you the standards and force comments earlier, and they had really good comments about our financial management practices, and we feel like we're very conservative there. But we are down at the bottom of the list as far as the amount of debt that we have issued in the overall cities compared to us. The next graph here is looking at debt per capita. And again, we are on the low side when you compare to other cities. They're looking at cities between 15 and 35,000. So when they're looking at that range in Texas with the same kind of bond rating that we're looking at. Okay, move on to the Water Fund. So the Water Fund is an enterprise fund, which means that it acts like a business. So it's self-supporting, pays for everything that happens in that fund with water and sewer revenues, among other revenues that relate to the Water Fund, such as new taps, whether for new construction, those kind of things, and a variety of other smaller revenue sources that are outlined very specifically in your budget book. It is the second-largest fund. It is balanced with 13.7 million dollars in revenue and expenditures. And we do have some proposed changes to utility rates, which we've talked about in detail, but I will talk to you a little bit about that in a moment. So FY22 revenue is proposed at 4.9% higher than fiscal year 2021. Transfer out for debt service is $224,000 more than fiscal year 21. And debt payments do fluctuate, depending on debt payment schedules and that are set up at the time of issuance. So you, we'll see those move a little bit, one way or the other, each year. Transfer out to the General Fund for reimbursement for administrative expenses, $153,000 more due to increased costs in the General Fund. So each fund shares some of the costs for what services are provided to each fund from the General Fund, from HR to finance to, you know, a variety of other administrative tasks that we do for multiple funds. And then, again, transfer out to asset replacement of 300,000, this is 150,000 more than we transferred out in fiscal year 21. So again, trying to build that pay-as-you-go funding. And we don't have a lot of expenditures proposed in the Water Asset Replacement Fund, so we feel like we can start working toward building that fund balance. So talk about proposed rates a little bit. I know we've talked about this before, just for those who haven't been part of that, or it's been a little while since we've talked about it. So we discussed this in the July budget workshop, and we're proposing slight rate changes to the water and sewer rates both. So going back to 2019, we've talked about this rate study that was conducted for Citywide. And so this outside organization who conducts rate studies for a multitude of reasons and across, you know, multiple organizations, came back to us with recommendations on how to stabilize our water revenue a little bit. Because as you know, water revenue, I mean, it's rained all of July. We don't really know what, how that's going to affect our August billing yet. So. So, it's very, very volatile depending on weather, but our expenses are not. And so, how do we come up with a way that's fair to the citizens, but it is also make sure that we can recoup at least our expenses and have a breakeven year? So, that's really what we looked at when we were looking at this. We did not do any rate increases in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. In fact, I don't think we did any increases at all in twenty-twenty-one because of the pandemic and the time of the year that we were doing budget. So, moving on and looking at proposed rates, you've seen this chart before, but I thought it was worth sharing again. Just really, the message here is that we are making a change to the base rate on water accounts of eighty-two cents per customer. And then, slight increases to the higher tiers, really to encourage water conservation as part of our twenty-fifty plan. But the main increase here is to the base rate, which will help stabilize those revenues, as we've talked about. But notice the average user there, so sixty percent of our customers fall into a tier that is not going to see any volumetric rate change at all. Looking at kind of the same chart on the sewer side, small proposed rate, base rate, again, of seventy-three cents per account. Also, remember, on water and sewer, we do include a thousand gallons of use. So, if you are a low user, the only thing you're really paying is the base rate because you have a thousand gallons included in that. So, for the single household people, you're probably just paying the minimum unless you're watering or something like that. Residential sewer rates are determined by using winter averaging, and this is an important message to share. That way, people know that during the months of December, January, or in February, really cut back on watering and water use because that is how your residential sewer rate is set for the entire year. And we find that, you know, we try to put that information out, but sometimes people just don't get it. And then, they come back, you know, in April, and we're changing rates, and they have a higher sewer bill. And most time, we're able to work with them and get that adjusted, but the education piece is real important to us. So, those averages are adjusted annually in March after the March bills are completed, because remember, we bill a month behind. So, then the April bill is when they see the changes to their residential sewer rate. And that remains the same for the entire year. So, looking at the overall proposed rates, as discussed in the July budget workshop, proposing small increases to water and sewer, primarily to the base rate. No volumetric increase for the lowest tier, for the average customer. And sixty percent of our customers fall into that average tier. So, for an average person using, I use fifty-five-hundred gallons as an average, that's about where the average is falling right now. Over the past several months, the average customer is going to see a two-dollar-and-five-cent increase on that overall bill.
While we're on the water rates, what's the plan for the multi-year rate that we?
The multi-year is coming back to you in the form of a resolution based on guidance from council. And I believe that's on the September meeting. Is that correct?
I believe so.
I'll have to go back and look at the day, but it is coming to you as a resolution with that plan in place. And we can talk through that more, you know, either at a workshop or, you know, whatever. But we can certainly provide that to you, but that is coming back to you. And that will help a lot of the efforts that it takes to make these kind of decisions, you know, in looking at, you know, volumetric factors. And there's a lot of factors that goes into deciding, you know, how much water we think the city's going to use and what that looks like as far as revenue. Okay, so, moving on to water and sewer overall revenues. So, we talked about total revenue budget of thirteen-point-seven million, water sales. This includes reuse, contributes fifty-two percent of the total revenue, followed really closely behind with sewer sales at forty-five-point-nine. Other revenue includes waste disposal fees, which we've seen a pretty big jump in that category. And that would be waste haulers that take things to our water reclamation plant and dump them over there, tap fees, and a variety of other smaller revenue sources that hit the water fund. So, looking at water fund expenditures by category. Proposed expenditures, thirteen-point-seven million, so balanced fund. This expenditures include salary adjustments of the two-percent cola and the merit, just like the general fund does, so that we keep all employees on the same playing field. Anticipated increases in chemicals and utility and maintenance costs, particularly after the freeze. We really don't know, you know, what natural gas and electricity are going to do right now. So, we did account for some increases there. And it does still contain the street use fee of four percent.
Like a percentage of increase or?
I'm sorry?
For the estimated increase, was there, is there like a percentage that you're estimating?
Overall? Yeah, I didn't pull that in, but yes, I have it. It's, I believe it's in the budget book, overall increase. I believe it's about four percent. Is that right, Trina?
Or, okay.
I think it's about four percent, but I can look that up. But yes, it's in the budget book at the overall percent.
I was just curious.
Okay, talk about water capital project funds. So, primarily in twenty-twenty-two, we're looking at the Guadalupe River Crossing Utility, lowest tank rehab, a potential replacement there, the NAP wastewater collection projects that we have going on, continuing on with our advanced metering infrastructure project, so entering phase two of that. So far, so good in phase one, continuing to see better results with every building cycle. So, we're excited to add another phase that's going to add about forty-five-hundred additional accounts to that process. Finishing our water wastewater master plan update. And then, we're getting money from a variety of places. So, if you remember, we have a recovery grant from the Texas Water Development Board that's reimbursable. So, that's where some of the money is going to be coming from. Remaining Texas Water Development Board that we didn't spend for Legion Lift will be designated to the NAP wastewater project. And then, remaining previously issued debt and pay-as-you-go funding from the water fund. But we are not proposing any new debt issuance in the water fund this time.
The advanced metering infrastructure?
Yes.
How many phases do you think?
We will have three.
Okay.
We will have three. So, we're proposing two new data collectors be installed this in twenty-two, and then two more in twenty-three.
Okay.
And the one that we did this year, we only did one, and it was kind of as a test run just to let us do it internally, kick that off, get it running really smoothly before we went on to the next two phases.
So, total of three?
Total of three phases, yes, ma'am. We expect to finish that in twenty-three.
Okay.
Okay. So, water asset replacement fund, remember, I told you we don't have a lot of expenses here for twenty-two. We did buy the VATCon in FY twenty-one, so that took a lot out of our fund balance. And from what I can tell, is being used, and staff are very happy with that purchase that needed to be made. But we are trying to build that fund balance back up. So, we're going to be purchasing a Bobcat, which is kind of a walk-behind model here pictured for water distribution or utility construction as they're out there digging up and installing new lines. It's replacing a two thousand and four model. We have three existing leases right now, and then we'll be replacing one new lease. And that is a utility construction truck for water distribution. So, that's why it's a little bit more expensive than the other leases. It's going to have a service body and some other things on it that they need for their crews. Okay, moving on to water debt service fund. Debt service, you'll see, remains stable through, really, until near twenty-thirty. So, our twenty-twenty-two debt service is four-point-three million dollars, or thirty-one percent of water fund revenue, which is a little bit lower than fiscal year twenty-one, not a whole lot, pretty stable there, but still below the city council policy of less than thirty-five percent of revenues. And again, no new debt funding proposed for this year. I'm going to give TA for hotel occupancy tax.
All right, I'm going to briefly go over hotel occupancy tax fund and golf fund, give Julie another break. So, again, this is a really interesting one that is important to look at the trend lines and look at the actuals versus estimates. So, fiscal year twenty-nineteen, you could see we were, you know, continuing to track along at a pretty steady clip prior to this timeframe. And then, certainly, fiscal year twenty, we had a significant COVID impact. And so, going into twenty-one, you know, we were conservative in the way that we budgeted, particularly for tourism travel, and but it proved wrong and much to our benefit, right? And so, fiscal year twenty-one estimate, we do think will be above. We know it will end up above the fiscal year twenty-nineteen actuals. And so, we continue to be very conservative in the way that we budget because we realize we're still in the middle of a pandemic. And so, we are restoring, proposing to restore CBB funding back to the fiscal twenty-nineteen-year levels since we did, we know that we at least achieved that in fiscal year twenty-one. So, we feel pretty confident in that. This continues the support that we have provided traditionally for community events, which drive our tourism economy, which, again, is seventeen percent of our local economy. Things like Riverfest, Fourth on the River, the regional exhibits that are provided for by the Museum of Western Art, the Curville Triathlon, sports tournament and advertising support and the marketing for those, P2K, arts co-op marketing, public art installations, and then some of the transfers that we have in relation to the staff that we have on board that are providing support for those efforts that are specifically tourism and promotion-related. And then, also hospitality industry market evaluation as we're coming out, hopefully, of this pandemic and evaluating where our current stock is in relation to different hotel and motel facilities and where that tourism market is. So, again, really looking at the proposed versus that fiscal year twenty-one estimate and harkening back to that fiscal twenty-nineteen actual. We talked about short-term rentals earlier, certainly in your meeting. We're seeing, you know, a steady incremental increase in that, but again, a modest level, you know, right around mid-fifties. And that revenue source does continue to grow for us. It's about the level of one Express Hotel, you know, at this point. So, we are, I think it's important to let the community know that, you know, those folks are paying their fair share, so to speak, in regards to hotel-motel taxes, just like the hoteliers are. They're not getting a freebie as far as marketing, the marketing of Curville to the tourism economy. Any questions on hotel-motel? Okay, golf fund, this is another good news story. Again, looking at the trend lines, you know, we're fortunate in that, you know, really, the Scott Shroner Municipal Golf Course has been a net winner throughout the pandemic. You know, folks have been, not only has our course maintenance been excellent, and our staff has been great at making sure that we're keeping expenditures in line, but we're seeing more players out there. They picked up golf through the pandemic, they've seen it as a safe activity, and they're continuing to utilize the course. And so, we are, for our estimate for fiscal year twenty-one, is actually seeing revenues above expenses, which is fantastic. We have not seen that in a number of years. So, for fiscal year twenty-two, we are proposing, again, that those are balanced at expenditures and revenues. We think that we will continue to see revenues increasing. But we want to, again, be conservative in the way that we look at that because we hope that it will continue going into the future. But again, we want some solid years of data before we begin to just bank on those revenue sources coming in consistently. Fortunately, again, in twenty-twenty-one, we did see some private donations for some infrastructure improvements out there, which has been great. We did add a new range ball card, which I think was a couple decades old. It was on its last leg. In fiscal year twenty-two, again, we do propose some improvements related to infrastructure and cart paths because we do think that provides a lot of bang for our buck as far as our customers out there. That's really, we've done some surveying, and that's what they're telling us. They really would like is a little bit better cart path, and it helps us out in the maintenance side as well. We do have a new lease truck for maintenance, replacement of some trees that we lost unfortunately in the winter storm and not necessarily getting insurance revenues for that. And so, we're, as you know, that can affect course play, and so, we're having to be very cognizant about the replacement of those trees. And then, additional overseeding, protect the grass, that really helped us out tremendously. You know, we picked that up a couple of years ago in that operational practice, really more of a winter play-type activity and being able to extend the playable seasons out at the golf course. And it absolutely helped us out during winter storm early because it provided basically a heat blanket for those greens. Otherwise, we would be coming to you this year with some significant capital damages that had occurred to those greens. And so, we're very fortunate. We want to continue that practice of overseeding. We think it's been great for the course and really provides us a little bit of a leg up in regards to some of the other regional courses offerings around. And then, again, we do anticipate a transfer from the general fund to the golf fund and from HOP fund in regards to some of the marketing elements and operational pieces on this. And again, it always banks upon what revenues look like, right? So, if we have a year where revenues are exceeding expenses like they are this year, then we may have the opportunity to pull back on what that transfer ends up being to provide a balanced operation out there. We do have some very small proposed fee changes, incremental fee changes. Again, looking at a dollar and two-dollar rate increases for some of the different categories throughout those cart and fee paths. If you have any interesting questions you have?
This looks good.
Okay, back to Julie.
I got a drink, ready to go. Okay, looking at the library memorial fund. So, again, this is one of those funds that does not have to be balanced. So, keeping in mind, everyone loves the library, we get a lot of donations to the library. And so, we've saved up a substantial fund balance, and now we're going to be able to make some really good improvements to the complex over there. So, a to-be-determined amount is going to be going to the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center. You know, EA talked about that a little bit earlier. We do have some major HVAC system problems over there, and that's been around for a couple of years, and we've been trying to address that, and they're now in, like, looking at engineering plans for that. So, I think we're out to bid for that, if I'm not mistaken. We did receive bids back today for the library ramp to the river. And so, that'll be coming to you for approval, I believe, in the August meeting.
I believe so.
Late August, yes. And then, library books, as always, and we spend some money out of this fund on library books, and we've talked about that in budget workshops prior to this. Presenters for youth and adult programs, she has a minute five thousand. We're really hoping she can get back to that because if you've ever seen some of the programs that the library puts out, they're just amazing for youth, and now she's really starting to build on that and bringing in some good presenters for adults as well. Includes Mango language learning, electronic books, online magazines, and some streaming subscriptions, as well as some window shades that are needed to be replaced in the library. So, we do have a lot of special revenue funds, and we're not going to go into every single one of them in detail because some of them have very few expenditures and honestly, very few, very small revenue source. It just depends on year to year and how that's looking. But two of the larger ones that we thought were important to point out was the police special revenue. So, we are spending seventeen-thousand-five-hundred dollars on some special operation unit rifles that were requested by the PD and then some special operation ballistic equipment as well. And the technology and camera equipment that you see there is primarily for the evidence techs to use to either capture or store evidence.
Do you have any kind of projections on revenue on this?
We do.
You do?
We do, based on prior years or just looking at multiple years, trying to take some average. Whereas it does fluctuate, you know, from year to year, it's just, it's really hard to say. And there's also a component to this, that's LAOS funds that we receive money from the state, but it can only be used for training, and it can only be used for specific training. So, we don't budget for that. We let PD handle that money as they see fit within the guidelines that are given to them for that. Municipal court revenue, so a portion of their funds pays for a part of the bailiff's salary at the court. School pedestrian enhancements for child safety this year is a bigger expenditure than it has been in the past. But keep in mind that with your new vehicle registration, you now pay that dollar for child safety, and that money is restricted, and we get a portion of that money, and it's a small portion. But this is an estimate given to us by the county of what they anticipate us getting for the next year based on the number of vehicles that'll be registered. So, we plan on spending that money on pedestrian enhancements and child safety areas. And then, kiosk and camera maintenance, you know, they have the self-pay kiosk over at the court. If you haven't seen it, its name is Jack, and so, you can pay Jack when you can't pay anybody else. Find out your information there, so just regular maintenance on security in their kiosk. And then, they do have a child safety program, and I know we've talked about that before so that they issue child safety seats to people who need them for whatever reason. And so, we have forty-five-hundred dollars in the budget for that, and that's a pretty stable budget. We do that every year. So, this is the overview of all of the other funds. And again, I really don't think there's a lot of value in going into each one of these individually, but they are outlined in the overall budget if you wanted to look into them in detail. They include special revenue funds, some internal service funds. They have designated fund balances. Sometimes, they have to be used for specific purposes. Sometimes, we have some freedom with what we spend it on, but we keep a close eye on what those funds are supposed to be used for and make sure that we stay within the guidelines. So, sometimes, as EA said earlier, we may build up some money. If we have a project that we know fits into the scope of what's allowable for each fund, and once we save that money up, then we'll spend it on a project that we've been saving up for. Okay, whoa, I was through. Where'd you go? It's not going to go backwards. So, where's my last slide, and this is when it does this?
Forty-one.
Okay, so, next step, so, August twenty-fourth, we'll be bringing the first reading of the budget ordinance to you as well as the tax rate. Both will be asking for action on those on that day. And then, the next slide is just an explanation of the resolution that we're asking for tonight to adopt the resolution thirty-seven dash twenty-twenty-one, just setting forth the ad lorum tax to be considered for adoption for the twenty-twenty-one tax year or the twenty-twenty-two budget. just setting forth the ad lorum tax to be considered for adoption for the 2021 tax year or the 2022 budget. And that is required by our city charter and state law. So we will have to do a notification if you so choose to do that. I don't know, Shelley, do you need to read that? Well, if anybody else wants to talk about budget, anybody have any budget questions for me? Move on to that.
Ms. Behrens, could you go back through this presentation page by page?
If you buy lunch tomorrow, we'll talk about it.
I bet you can do it in your sleep.
I think there's some things I missed.
I'm certain there are.
Great job, Julie. Great job.
Comments, questions?
Just going on our general and our water asset replacement funds, do we have a plan set on how much we transfer over each year in the future to save up and start projecting for?
So we talked about this in the budget workshop, as you recall, and we are just beginning to look at a long-term plan for asset replacement as we're looking at what we have in the city that needs to be replaced and when it needs to be replaced and things we're buying now and when they'll need to be replaced. So the short answer is yes, we transfer as much as we can. Remember, we have to keep our budget in balance. So if we have a really tight year and something has to go, you know, sometimes you have to look at the things that are somewhat expendable versus paying the light bill or, you know, some things like that. So really, it's part of the budgeting process. And as we work through that, we try to earmark, you know, what we would like to have transferred over. And then we work backwards from there just based on revenues and expenses and just see what we're able to do. And that's really how the budgeting process works. At the end of the day, just, you know, you, you set a goal and you do what you can do.
Where is staff kind of like looking at that, at that plan? Where in the process, like, how far are y'all in saying that? Are y'all planning on presenting to council or is it going to be an internal kind of work that y'all do?
It will, it'll be some internal work for a while because there's a lot of moving parts to that plan, especially as we start implementing more enterprise leases that will potentially take the place of some of our larger expenses that we have to go out and spend forty thousand dollars on a new truck or something like that. So I know Guillermo is doing a lot of work on that tenure plan and he's looking at literally every piece of equipment that we have to replace that's over five thousand dollars and saying, when do I think this needs to be replaced and how much is it going to cost? And where is that going to hit in the budget? So how much money are we going to need in the budget at that point in time? And then just developing a plan to see if we can get to that fund balance so that we can keep our asset replacement as a pay-as-you-go.
As you recall, we do have pay-as-you-go funding within this proposed budget in both general fund, capital asset replacement and water fund asset replacement. So I think we're moving in a positive direction.
We are.
Both on the funding level as well as having a better idea of the forecasting ability for our expenditure needs in those asset replacement categories. So now it's a matter of making those match up, right?
Yep.
Well, and for example, as you saw in the water fund, we're spending sixty-six or sixty-seven thousand dollars and we're putting three hundred thousand in. So just really working in the direction of building that fund balance so that we don't have to come and ask for a loan to go and buy, you know, equipment that we need. Just continue to try to build that fund balance over time and just doing the best we can and really just working through the finances in a, in a good way.
Right, yeah, okay. And then on the property tax rate? So I, of course, I'm sure that y'all looked at all the options. Is, do y'all have anything, one, two, three more options on what it would be like if we did do the no new revenue tax rate?
No, we did not. I did not bring that with me. The proposed rate that we came up with kept us from having to look at, you know, reducing any major expenses. It kept us in a balanced budget, taking care of the needs that we felt like needed to be put back in the budget that had previously been taken out for the scarce years and then, you know, trying to make up a little bit of ground from what we cut out of fiscal year twenty twenty. So no, we did not, you know, if you remember, when we first presented this, we were presenting it at the same tax rate.
Right.
And so we were actually able to make it work that we could lower it. So we felt like that was a move in the positive direction. But I did not come up with more than, more than one option here.
Okay, again, that's, you know, based off of the conservative approach that the council asked for in being able to build some of those pay-as-you-go reserve type funds for asset replacement and other elements. That money has to come from somewhere, right? And so you can't continue to cut the tax rate to the bare bones and be able to build those funding reserves.
My final two comments on the information for, in our, in our budget book. Two things that might be useful, I don't know, for council, this is just thinking out there, to be able to compare what the proposed budget is to what we actually spent. So I don't know if that's, is that in the final one?
Yes, it will. So when you get your final, if, if this budget is approved as presented, as we get closer to year end, we will bring in a fiscal year twenty-one estimate, which will be really close to what our fiscal year-end numbers are, you know, with a few adjustments that we have to make further in October. So you probably won't see a final copy of the budget book until later in October and it's primarily for that reason, because we really need to get those year-end numbers in. And you'll see an additional column in your budget book that'll say FY twenty twenty-one estimate. And so you'll be able to see where twenty twenty-one is estimated to end for the year and then you'll see twenty twenty as well. And then you're going to see proposed for twenty-two. So you're actually going to get two and a half years of data.
This will be after it's adopted, right?
That's correct, yeah. I mean, if you, if you try to do estimates now, I mean, expenses are ongoing every day. I mean, it would, we have literally in some departments, you know, fifty, sixty plus line items. So to have to estimate every single one of those for every department, it's, it's impossible at this point in time. Where we are right now is impossible in that kind of detail. But yes, it will be there in that much detail when your final budget book comes out.
Right, council, any other questions?
I just have one related to other funds and it's number thirteen. The police special revenue, it's on page forty.
Yes, ma'am.
What kind of expenses come out of there?
Well, if you back up to page, page before that, you'll see what we have proposed for this year. The only thing that's not on this list that you see here is that LAOS training that we talked about and that is money that the state gives to police and fire that they have to use in certain ways and it's restricted. And so we don't budget for that, we let them budget for that throughout the year as they find trainings that fit into the scope of what those funds are allowable for.
Okay, so for purposes of maybe trying to, to get a other fund started that we could start putting money into for like a K-9 unit?
Yes, I believe there is a fund for K-9 unit already and there is a fund, if I'm not mistaken, at the community foundation that is set up as a nonprofit. And you may reach out to Chief McCall for details on that. But we do, we have been receiving donations towards the K-9 unit. And I'm, I can't speak to what's being sent over to the community foundation. But next year, what you'll see is a fund balance in this fund that's going to be basically what we're going to call our savings account from, from money that we've created for the K-9 unit. You'll see that in a separate line.
I talked to Mr. Dixon the other day, the community foundation. We've got a fire fund, we've got a police fund and there's a third fund, I think. But it looks like we, I don't know what the restrictions are. It looks like those are things we ought to highlight along the way so people know they could contribute there toward fire, toward police, so forth.
We could put that with Stuart's.
Yes.
Stuart's comments potentially, just for information.
Yeah, we've, we've had a lot of generous philanthropy, particularly as we mentioned before, in the library arena over the years. And so by creating those funding mechanisms and some of those tax incentives that are related to that, certainly we hope that we encounter some additional generous philanthropy for those other activities.
Okay, thank you and you're not, you're not quite through.
Not quite through.
Oh, yeah, Ms. McLandon, would you read that in for us, eight A?
Yes, and Resolution number thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-one, the Revolution Set in Florida, the tax rate to be considered for adoption for the 2021 tax year, said reg to be point five zero nine three for one hundred dollars of assessed value calling a public hearing prior to the adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget as required by both the city's charter and state law. And Mayor News, this is speaker's line.
All right, council, do you have any questions?
Just clarifying for the public, we're not approving any tax rate right now, just.
That's correct, we're just approving the public hearing.
Okay, all right. Do I hear a motion on this matter?
I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution number thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-one, setting the proposed tax rate of zero point five zero nine three for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget. I'll second that.
Ms. Hughes, second it?
Is, I think.
Do we need?
Can you say that tax rate again, please?
Okay, zero point five zero nine three. You need sense behind it?
No, it was me.
You just read it like that, right?
It was me.
All right, okay, we got a motion second. Any further discussion?
Just, I would ask for a roll call vote on this one.
You would what?
Request a roll call vote on this one.
Okay. Would you? I don't know, we can. City sector, would you call the roll and vote on this?
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Clarkson?
Yes.
Mayor Blackburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Ickman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
Okay, and it passes unanimously. Okay, anyone else, anyone to speak to this? Do we have anyone?
Yes, sir.
All right, okay. Motion carries unanimously. All right, we now move to items for future agendas. Anybody have an item for future agenda?
I would like to ask that we look at something besides letters and articles in the paper for notification for things that we are sending out to the public. And I think P and Z also was, has kind of looked, asked to maybe look at this. I think one of the things that was discussed in their meeting was possibly, I mean, letters, you know, I don't know how many people read them. The newspaper is becoming antiquated in many ways for things like this. Sorry to say that, but I think it, I think it is. And so one of the things I think P and Z mentioned was a, maybe a sign in the yard. And so if, if, I just think we need something more than just our letters in newspaper.
Wait, 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 a sign in whose yard?
In the, in the yard that there's going to be a zoning change or something of that nature. And if we could look, what are other cities doing? Is that allowed? Is that, I just, I just feel like we need notification to the public more than we are doing.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Okay, it does for lack of a second. Okay, if the no other items for future agenda, we are adjourned at eight oh two.